On the first page is just the highlight on the revenue streams for the 2022 budget. Of course, we have our general fund that normally has about thirty-one, thirty-two million dollars in it. We need to do some other areas with gas tax, neighborhood repayment earmark funds, the capital replacement earmark funds, funds for utilities, franchise fees. Then we'll normally get some out from our Madison County Commissioner Steve Parraway.
Steve, could you answer my question for Renee? Sorry to interrupt.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so those first ones that I just mentioned are the recurring each and every year. The next section are the one-time funding streams that we have for 2022. It includes some seven million dollars from ALBOH. Also two of the COVID funded from the federal government. One of which we've already got, just the CARES Act, that was two, two thousand, two million dollars. And then we'll be getting another five million dollars for the American Rescue Plan. We'll get two point five this year and two point five next year. Just a note, we'll come back and talk about it a bit later. One of our bond issues, the target bond that we got back in 2010, 2011 when the Target Center come, we're about to pay that off when that's paid off in the second quarter of 22. Those sales taxes on that will go back into the general fund. And finance and it's going to recommend that we reappoint or reissue that earmark. Those funds go into the debt service fund.
Okay, one question about that, Steve. So the pay, to pay those bonds each year, it's a little over nine hundred thousand dollars. The rest of that money has been going into general fund, correct?
It's part of the transfer we have been doing into the general fund.
Right.
At the end of the year.
Yeah, so that nine hundred thousand is the one that is available base per se, right? That's what we'll be paying off. Yeah, if you took the, yeah, if you take the entire one point eight million, and Ernest is taking nine hundred thousand a year out of the general fund.
I just looked at the numbers for TN Motors. It's one point nine eight as of TN Motors.
That's just the city portion, it's not the school portion, correct?
It's the city.
And just so everybody knows, we do have a lot of tax dollars that go into our debt repayment line item. Roger pays all of our bonds and all of our debt through that particular line item. And then if that proportion of what's left over transferred into the general fund, so we can continue to add services to our community.
All right. When you say finding, finances, or you mean the roster, please recommend?
Well, roster, Finance Committee or Finance Department.
Okay. I had a meeting discussion on finance.
Yeah, it's not made to finance me yet. It's just been some discussions we've had between us two and trying to plan for 2022 and report to the mayor. Well, I don't know if I was.
Renee, we'll get it, we'll get it afterwards and we'll go through it with them.
Okay.
A few more questions on page one. Just an oversight on, on money. Page two, just a list of projects and equipment that were not originally on the 21 budget. They were scheduled for either 22 or 23 budget. And we have some excess funds due to the COVID here, plenty of some havoc on some of our salaries and other areas. We've had additional money. And so that's just some projects and some equipment removed from up and took care of in 21. So it's a, it's a good list of equipment. We've got a couple of projects in there. Total's just right under one point eight million dollars that moved into the 21 budget. We do have some other minor project sidewalks and maybe some other equipment that's going to come on board in 21 as well. Just trying to go ahead and get ahead of the game so we can have a more successful 22.
Is the drones twenty-three thousand seven ninety-four percent twice?
That's the total for two drones.
It's twenty-three thousand.
It's just a tiny.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If it was like two hundred thirty or something.
You give the A, that was a test.
Yay, yay, thank you.
Get a few pieces of beats in it.
I'm thrilled.
It's a phone that you can throw in there.
How you do it?
Yeah, it's a, hey, can you tell us about the phone?
It's a five thousand dollar negotiation phone.
Because I'm going to butcher what it is, but. It's spy phone.
It's not like one of those things with the Pentagon, thirty thousand dollar hand. So what it is, it's a way of communicating with somebody who's barricaded himself inside the negotiator phone. It has a hard case on the outside, so they actually throw it through a window. They have to throw it someplace, they throw it up to a second story window or something. And it has a line if the next back there the negotiators are. And it allows us to communicate with people in crisis, people that have been holding hostage or something else like that. And the reason for the crisis is because of the electronics on it. Also because of how it's built that they're able to make us take it around so it doesn't break. And it has some other technical stuff on there.
Having Dixie gaps on strings.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
How many, how many phones was it?
Just one.
It's one.
So this is stuff we're pulling in, pulling into 21 from 22 and 23, correct?
Yes.
Is this stuff that can be purchased one year in a year?
Yes, you guys have already approved everything on this list. I appreciate it, thank you very much. Order come Monday night. Any questions on that part on page two? Page three, I've got that split up into two different categories. As we're walking through the budget, the first section is our items that are already being requested in the 2022 budget. Whether it's equipment or projects, we try to take everybody's big ticket items that are on this list. So it's a, it's a party for those departments, we're trying to support them in that. We currently have enough funding in the budget to handle all of the ones on the first category, the first section. Only thing that may be in question is the Kids Kingdom and the three springs. We're really close to, to both of those. So the second section.
Can I ask about the first section?
Yes, you may.
Headway there, under Neighborhood Streets, is there an opportunity to add in a couple of streets that have become a concern since the last time we talked on that Pacer program? The one that's on the website, I think it's like twenty to twenty-five. Would there be an opportunity to check into that?
There's always an opportunity. You know, one of the things that we found when going through this, and I think everybody knows it from a paving standpoint, they've, they've had trouble getting the paving companies here. One thing Michael's talking about is, you know, we usually use the county contract. What can we do from a city standpoint to get our own contract and have a first, second, and third? Because we're about a million dollars behind in paving right now because we can't get the papers here. So I thought that was a, you know, one that we'll be working on. Can we add streets to it? I think you need to put in there what you feel like would need to be added to it. Any of you guys, if you feel like something needs to be moved up, well, like any, you know, that's just something we gotta look at. Because you can give us one that may not even be close to what we're already getting ready to repay.
That's on a grading system, and it, and it's one through five or whatever it is.
Yes. Well, is it one through five or one through eight, nine, whatever it is?
One through ten, but everybody has their own. Some people do it one through a hundred.
Well, but you guys evaluate that each year? In the year, beginning year, middle of the year?
So to do an inventory of a whole city, it can take, take a while. But that's the one they did, that's what, two years ago? Every five years, but that's last year. That was the one that they did last year, so.
Sure.
It's coordination of county line, building department signals. I thought, I thought they'd already done that by the time since. Is that an ongoing process that we pay or is that software?
It's software.
So use software to buy or make an update, existing?
It's new software that public parks need to get in, probably the OT department. Because I think with that software, they'll be able to eyeball all of our signals, see wide. And they will tell them when something's down, something's slow, when something's off. And they'll be able to, you know, do a lot of the repairs from their office instead of having to go out on the side to make repairs.
And, and they talked about they had, they did the project with the money that they had, but that's all the money that they had and what's left over was this piece here plus what Steve just said. So this is in addition to what they did to have the software to be able to do that.
And, and again, this is just what's being proposed. Mayor's scrubbing stuff, Finance Committee will scrub it, then it comes to council for, for y'all's approval of lessons. So this is just kind of where we are right now.
Just to let council know, we didn't, I guess Roger gave us the budget last week. We then set up meetings with the five largest departments and finished those this morning. So we just now have talked with these guys to fully understand what, what they're asking for, why they prioritize it, in many instances, what people that they need. And so it's kind of fluid, but right now, having had those meetings, this is what's in there now. And then it's a matter of tying it into the first page of the different, you know, kind of where you guys could be able to see, all right, this money's going to be used for these projects. And so.
And just Brown Ferry Culver, is that right past Most Chapel, running that curve?
I'm sure. Yes, it's exactly what that is. Yes, Brown Ferry Culver is the one between Volch.
A little widen that, as we redo that, that's to widen that area a little bit.
Yeah. So whenever we take one out, if we look at the future, that it would be a three lane, we'll be widening until coming. If we take that and see if there's any. Right.
We did, we did a pretty study on that with Eric eighteen months ago or something. There were several wrecks in that curve right there, there's one of us even on here. And I thought we would want to widen that. Because right now, if you get even a few trucks, one of us has to stop in that curve.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be.
For the last one, I'm just asking, I was getting clarification on. No sense to replace it unless it's going to be wider.
Right, no, it is going to be, it's not going to go back how it is. The idea was to widen it out and add the appropriate ramp guards.
And same thing with the ones on Palmer, correct?
Correct.
And are we still going to widen Volch from kind of just north of Mill to just have Scooch? That was kind of part of the Roundabout at one point? And is that still kind of in the plans to do that? I know it's consecutive with the Roundabout, but are you familiar with, do you remember Michelle?
So that, that's from Brown's Berry up to the city limit, that's still in that ALDOT project.
Okay, so we have no timetable for that?
Currently, we're still looking at September twenty-two.
Okay, thank you.
With ALDOT, the time projection's probably within ten years.
So Steve, I don't see Brown's Berry and Frederick Roundabout on your.
All right, again, this, so far, this is what's been turned in by department heads, you know, part of who.
So you haven't rolled our request in yet, is that what you're saying?
We rolled some request in. Well, we can't meet dollar request. And right now, that Roundabout, it would need to be designed, so did we?
There's the design.
We have a conceptual layout, all we have on the wall, but in terms of like construction, not infection.
Okay, okay.
Not there, I'd say twenty, thirty percent, like conceptual layout, but not a full design plan.
So Connie, my goal would be to get that in there, put the engineering piece of that in this year and then build it the following year.
And one thing we are trying to do is exactly that. In years past, we were just put design and execution all in the same fiscal year and we never got through anything. So we're trying to get from an engineering standpoint, projects that are high priority, ready to go. So they're on the list for twenty-two, so we can go ahead and execute and get those issues corrected. And then we also, they're also working on a list of design projects that can design through 2022. So when twenty-three rolls around, we're ready to execute that list. So that way, we're just trying to get ahead of the game. And then if a grant or something like that becomes available and it's ready to go, because we've got a design ready for it. Got any other questions on the, on the top portion?
You talk about the Kids Kingdom. Is there, is that a dollar amount? We have, I know if they're raising that five hundred, like what?
Six ninety is the goal.
So what is ours, and what is, so what do you have in here for this Kid, Kids Kingdom?
Right now, they've already raised over two hundred thousand dollars. So I mean, our portion at this time will be around four hundred thousand dollars.
But our goal is to take care of it through MVP, so I think this is just kind of in here as a safety.
Also, I was just trying to figure out like, what do we have in here now that, so as they raise more than ours, ours company?
That part's kind of fluid right now. We don't have a hard number on it at all. Just know that we need to plan for something during into twenty-two. Okay, so kind of referring back to, to the first page on the target bonds being paid off and renewing those funds to debt service. One of the thoughts is we could take that money and maybe approach a bank for a bond through a bank issue as opposed to going to S and P and Luther's for a bond issue. As much we know, the money's pretty cheap to get right now. So it just kind of makes sense to take advantage of today's market. And we can go get some cheap money going through a bank with stimulus additional funds as well because we don't have the approval process, we don't have an underwriter fee, we just don't have all those expenses that go along with a bond issuance. And so we could go to a bank, we could borrow fifteen, twenty million dollars, whatever you guys decided, and we could apply it to other projects. And these other projects come from a portion of the list that you guys turned in as well as the department has turned in. So that's what the bottom section is, is a list of potential projects. It's not saying it's the only projects, it's just a list of potential projects. And if we, you guys did choose to borrow some additional funds, these are projects that we could knock out during twenty-two.
Or start in twenty-two and then done twenty-two, twenty-three, whatever it takes to, to go through that process.
We try to pick ones out that are pretty, you know, kind of ready to go, just being prioritized a bit more of it. And again, we've got several sidewalk connections that we've been talking about that we'd like to make into the greenways and just from one road to over to the next. We've got some park issues, some recreational things, some additional items. We do have a couple of economic development projects that are coming up or would maybe require or ask to contribute for road improvements or something else, so.
On the Greenway slash Gillespie County Line, is that picking up like a heritage elementary with the Mill Creek Greenway and continuing up to Liberty Middle School, kind of supporting three springs in there?
Now, the Gillespie County Line, you know, we've got a sidewalk now on Gillespie that just kind of stops.
Oh, okay.
John's house. And John's hired people knocking on his door, wanting to know what the rest of the sidewalk is. So we're just going to extend it down County Line Road.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. If you have mine, Steve, let me ask you another question. In terms of the future 2022 projects that you did outline that we might use money to borrow from the target, I mean, that brings up, a lot of these projects in 2022 are quality of life projects. And those would be things that impact fees to go toward that would not impact, aren't to a negative way. You could impose impact fees just on residential. Have you done a cost analysis of what these things would add up to be?
For impact fees? I've not addressed impact fees because the last official council decision was on impact fees. But if you guys want to address that, then that's always part of it to do so.
I would think before we would go into debt tomorrow, maybe we might want to revisit that issue and discuss this.
Again, that's y'all's call and I'm not having any direction on that.
I would totally support the, the, the choice, working on impact fees.
And it's y'all's call, it's, it's my call.
Are we up against a, how much can we continue to borrow?
We've only got fifty, sixty million dollar space. And that's the thing about going to a bank and getting a smaller issue. Normally when you go to the bond market, you get a twenty to twenty-five million dollar bond issued. We're just looking at fifteen million dollars, maybe up to twenty, just to knock some of this stuff out because money is cheap right now. So it's, we could, at one time, I thought we could do most of this stuff without any more money and just pull it out of our general fund. But talking to our department heads, I think we gotta prioritize our employees over some of these projects. So we've got to support our department heads and what they're trying to accomplish. So that's where some of our funds are, are being done.
So the initial budget that came into us had thirty additional positions added to it from the different departments that we have to try to analyze how we're going to manage to grow. Sixteen of those coming directly from police and fire. So part of what, you know, we have to balance is making sure from a city standpoint that we have the assets in place to take care of the external, you know, our, our citizens and the things that they need, also our internal folks as far as what they need. And balance that with, again, how much money do we have to spend on other projects? So we're going to be looking at that. And then Renee, we have no problems trying to analyze what you're talking about, but we haven't looked at it yet. Again, that's part of we simply, you know, find, I think Megan gave you guys an update on where we had gotten to and then we haven't had any other discussions. So it's something we can look at for sure.
So I thought that our follow-up from that meeting was that we were going to get a cost breakdown of what impact fees would generate just on residential, not commercial because quality of life expenses, expenditures would only be, would commercially not be impacted by that. And that we would get a dollar figure in terms of what you were looking at to spend on three springs or some of the parks and rec lines and then seeing what impact fees would generate on residential.
We can look at it, we didn't, we didn't take that next step. And again, as you know, Mary Beth's not for that, so that's part of where.
Yeah, Mary Beth is not elected to represent Madison though, so.
I understand, but she is, she is in a position to make sure that Madison's as successful as it can be through economic development. And we've been extremely successful in doing that and managing and building revenues. So I, I just, I mean, I totally agree with you, but she does get a voice in at least going forward. But we will do what you ask us to do to get that data back to you so you can make that decision. Because it is your vote. Steve's not saying that in any of the fairies or adversarial way. We're just saying we haven't been asked to do that yet, and we'll do that.
Again, this is just, nothing sinister. This is just information we're trying to throw out to you guys. I know you all turned in your requests for projects. Between y'all's request and the department head's request, we had a hundred and forty-two requests to make. So with what we've pushed into 21's budget, what we're trying to push out in 22's budget, we're hitting just under fifty percent of those requests. So you can't do all a hundred and forty-two in one year, you gotta kind of plan them out over a two or three year period. That's why we kind of broke out the revenues coming in that are recurring each year as opposed to one-time deals. And we're just trying to prioritize what we hear from our department heads, what we hear from the community, and just pin as much time as we can with every dollar we got. So again, this, this is kind of where we are right now. Mayor will give his budget to Roger and then building turn give it to Finance Committee. And again, Finance Committee will be able to go through it, review it, ask questions, changes, whatever you guys want to do, and it'll be presented to council for approval. So this is kind of where we are right now. We've got more work to do and then it'll be coming to you guys.
I got a question about, about the bonding side. So if we went to a local bank, what we're going to bond is, we would bond it against? The target money is what we would bond it against, is what you're saying? Or what would it, in your mind, what would it be?
In simple terms, within the bank, a modest type, we'll just look at the difference, like one bank for all.
You just go and follow up?
Our, our debt service line, we've got two, three million dollars, four million dollars each year over our expenses. So that's why we transfer money in the general fund for that. So we've got funding to, to handle a loan like that. I would like to do it on a fifty, fifteen year term, just because you pay for it quicker, just costs associated with it. Where if you go to bond market, you know, those, you can rest up a shorter payout, but you've just got so much more expense going off with it.
You would have a list of half a million dollars of initial fees, underwriter fees, insurance, rating agency fees, you borrow fifteen million dollars if I pay out four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars in expenses of that tomorrow. You go to the bank, I wear a schedule today, fifteen year, borrow fifteen million dollars to pay back one, one three million dollars, thirty if it's been here, it's done. There are no upfront calls like this, four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. You just, you and our people likes to give you a little bit of credit.
A lot quicker, you know, a bond from the rating agencies takes six, seven months, you know, to set up the calls, to get rated, to fill the market and everything else for an issuance from the bank, and get that done in years sixty, probably.
If we, if we decide as council, you know, in, in the future, if we want to move forward with this, regardless if, if impact fees move forward or not, if you think these are good things and we, we know we're going to either, then could we, we're not going to decide tonight, but we can move forward with the bank loan and then if, then we can earmark that.
That fees to pay.
Those fees to pay that loan back if, if that goes through. But this is going to take a while and I would hate to wait six, seven months.
That's the thing, if you do impact.
I guess, I'm not saying we should do that, I'm saying just so we don't plod the wheel.
Okay, I'm not trying to.
Do you need to go ahead and get a loan and go, hey, let's, we know we want to do this. We, and then we can keep moving and then go back and revisit that, what's that like, how much a year? And then we can earmark that to pay back that loan if, if all that passes through.
Yeah, we need to write a big interest rate, absolutely. And that's another thing to do that. But when you're talking about what you're going to stand on a long-term hedge, you've got to look at if the things you're buying doesn't last, that you're going to be going debt for thirty years.
I understand.
So I, I think we've got to go into a little bit more of an analysis and I think we've got to get numbers on what is impact fees on residential, they just quality of life expenses. And it's magnitude of the situation.
Correct.
Does anybody know where Stan on getting any economic personnel? Has Mary Beth got any success?
Yeah.
Sadly, so crucial that we have a position to be dealt as soon as it matters to have more economic development coming in, so. I just want to reiterate that.
Well, I think that's part, I think that's part of what Paul was just talking about. You know, there's money going, that's going to go into this budget for personnel, not just equipment. So, you know, we know that that's on the list.
Well, it's not the position, it's just what he can, he or she can create as when you're hired to start bringing in more revenue.
Correct, but if we don't.
So we don't have to go to debt.
Correct, but if we don't have the right number for that person to come to work here, they're not going to do it. Or they're going to come in for six months and leave. So that's, that's why, that's why money's got to be pushed into the personnel portion just as important as the, you know, the projects.
Oh, I totally agree. Whatever happened to the thought of doing a study for wages and salaries? I know it's talked about, was there a reason that it's not included in our budget?
HR did not support it.
Is that our decision or HR's decision?
It's HR's decision, but so the way, the way the budget works.
I'm, I'm asking about the study, not.
Yeah, so, so the way the budget works is the, the department heads bring the budget to the mayor. And they discuss that, test that, go back and forth. And the mayor brings it to Finance Committee. We look over that and go through it, you know, and then we bring that to the council. And that's, that's what the decision is made.
Yeah, but that's not what she's asking. She's asking, several months ago, we talked about doing a wage and salary survey.
Correct.
And she's asking what happened to that, why hasn't it happened? And then Steve said HR didn't approve it. So then now she wants to know, is that HR's decision or is that something that the council can, can request and override?
Council could override, but HR didn't support that because the data that would come back, they already have a lot of that data yet anyway. And that study's performed, what that group would do is go to Athens, go to Canada, go to Huntsville, ask them specific questions on certain job descriptions and get the pay scale for those descriptions and then compare them with what Madison's got. HR's already got a lot of that information and she just felt like it wouldn't be many well spent because of the information they already have.
It's just that right now, employment, wages are so fluid. I mean, it's definitely employed more.
I think we're all very aware of that.
And yeah, so what do we need to do on our side? So we are more attractive and is it bringing in more wages? Is it more quality of life in the workplace? What is it that we can do?
That's one thing the mayor and department heads are addressing and been working on for quite some time. And a lot of it is. And a lot of it is just going to come down to funding.
Okay, so would that be, I guess this one, where is the economic development that would fund that?
She's wondering what, we're going to need more revenue in theory, if we're going to raise salaries. And if we had this economic development person, would that be the revenue stream that would support these new salaries? Uh, please forgive me.
Oh, no, it's fine. No worries.
I under, I understand what you're saying, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but an economic development person would be beneficial to, to the city.
Yeah, so it's a very, and I haven't heard anything very same, so.
Well, again, I think since we lost the previous one, there's been discussions on the responsibilities entitled to that particular person. Because if you, if you make that title too low, then you're not people what you need, but if you make that title too high, then it doesn't fit in with the plan, or fit in with our current structure for employees. So it's not just a thing, same, we, we need an economic person to come in, so there's, there's a lot of discussion that has to take place to see what that person does, what their responsibilities are, what's their title, are they an executive? Are they a manager? You know, where do they fit in on the grading system, on the pay scale? And then what's the true function of that individual?
Does it make sense to hire the company or the consultant that does that, if not a employee of the city, but they're either a consultant firm or an individual consultant? If that's all, you know, maybe more make free buy, I don't know.
Yeah, you know, it's just a lot of discussion, because it's not like we don't have people calling us every day, wanting to come into the city and open, open business, you know. They're very busy down in Plankton, talking to people, and, and we've got a lot of projects in the works, and we've got some brilliant things, that's, that's happening. Uh, Town Madison is, is really taking off. We've got a lot of good dudes coming on Town Madison, and, and people want to be a part of what we have here. So personally, it would be nice to, to help assist Mary Beth and her team to, you know, close, close deals and, and see where things are at. It just takes time to figure out the right way to handle it, that's all. It's not as easy. Let's just go hire this person, and we're all that.
It took quite some time to get court hit, and, and like Steve said, you have to have the absolute right person that's the right fit. So, I mean, I think Mary Beth is definitely open to it. I think at one point, there was a, an announcement, right? That.
Oh, that's a job I was, yeah, I just asked where we are in the process, have people been responding? Or is the number just still too low, they aren't responding? I'm just, I'm asking questions, I'm not giving any.
I, I did ask her probably two or three weeks ago, and she said that there had been some interest, but she had not had the right. I even had somebody, um, ask me about the job, and I gave her Mary Beth's email and said, you know, this is the first meeting I've contacted. I just think it's not a quick process. That's probably one of the hardest jobs in the city to build, is that economic development person. I mean, they need a very specific skill set, so, um, I don't think it's something that you want to necessarily pick the first person unless they're just absolutely perfect. I think it's a process. Do you have any information on there on where Mary Beth is with the economic development person?
Uh, struggling to do exactly what you just said, finding the right person.
How? Um, that's not, not mild.
No, you're not.
Wow, damn, Mary Beth. Um, at the end of the day, I mean, I'm, I'm saying this at my point, I mean, it's hard to find anybody to fill any job.
Yeah.
People, A, don't want to work, B, being compensated not to do that, and C, your job's popping out now. So it's just not a conducive environment at this point in time to find the right, you know, to put them off.
Excellent, as to be doing whatever we can proactively to be, look attractive to people that are looking for jobs. And what can we do to stimulate them? That's.
What option?
How can we keep the freedom we have?
So what you got is?
That's why I was wanting to speak away, should any work happen, what can we do? What number do we take when we ask people to look at us? What more can we do on?
Yeah, does the job host assign anything about salary?
Hmm?
Yeah, and it's not necessarily a salary problem as far as that. One of the things about Madison is we don't have a lot of industrial land anyway to fill, so it's a, may not be the most, as attractive a job as you think, you know, with some of these folks that have large industrial areas, if they're trying to bring big folks into. Huntsville Madison County Chamber has a lot of our development in essence of creating the top part of it, bringing the Mazda Toyotas, and then those satellite businesses are coming back out of that, and a lot of the support mechanisms are, so. It's, it's not the easiest job to fill, but we did fill it.
Okay, so I will, on the next day or so, send the list out that you guys sent me, as along with the department head list. And I'll just highlight all the items that are being looked at for the twenty-two budget. Uh, just kind of give you an idea. And then as the budget makes its way to you, and projects are discussed, you guys will have a sense of other projects that are not higher up on the priority list. And then if you think something has been moved up, then you'll have that opportunity to make that happen. But I'll get that out to you tomorrow or Friday, and I'll see y'all can have that information as well.
Steve?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
It's fine.
Can you include, um, things that, like, for instance, that the engineering could be done next year, but the project won't be? Just as it, it can just note it, or something like that, or?
Yeah, the, the list that's being worked on for twenty-two, on that top section, uh, engineering, we've met several times, and they had a priority list of road projects. And all that's on the twenty-two priority that's already been included in the budget.
Oh, okay. That sounds like that should take care. Thank you.
And if I send the list, if you've got questions, or if you get something else highlighted, just let me know, I'd be more happy to highlight whatever you need to, so you guys understand. Just the projects, ones that we're trying to get funded to, to move forward, ones that may design next year, and execution year after, or maybe it's a two or three-year deal. And we'll just plan accordingly forwards.
I thought interesting, I went to the Capitol meeting, or I was on the Capitol meeting, it was via Zoom for the schools yesterday. And Dr. Nichols said that if we were to look to bid a middle school right now, it would cost sixty-eight million dollars versus the fifty that it cost. Just, you know, so you guys can, and they were talking about all the different capital pieces. They're in the same boat we are. Uh, they had received something from the state, maybe fifteen million dollars, which allowed them to get a lot of the air conditioning pieces that have to be done, that are, you know, not very glamorous. They're doing the same thing we are, but when they started knocking off for things that they're taking care of, that we're taking care of, with the monies that we have, I think we're both doing a really good job of managing, but there's only so much that you can fit into, yeah, each year. So I think, I think one of the things that I really appreciate that Steve did with our department heads is understand that there's money left at the end of this, that we already have budgeted, and so we started packing some of this stuff in. Because the earlier we buy this stuff, the better off we're going to be, because it's only going to go up, and some of the things is you can't get it. So, so, uh, and then we're going to be pretty judicious when it comes to talking with each one of these guys on the, the positions that they're looking for, and, you know, in essence, the, the, the equipment that they want, and make sure that we support them. Because again, you know, Megan's a perfect example of, you know, she'll have a list of stuff that's like this, where there's so much stuff that bumbles to the top. There's this, this list of stuff that's supporting a lot of the department heads, with certain things that they need to make the city better and more accessible, or things for, uh, our, our employees. So her being able to contract, put money in there to contract some of that out with someone who can just take care of the basic, you know, I, you know, we're going to, we're going to have an agreement with the concession facility to do this. Those types of things that's just, it needs legal, does, but she, a lot of us can't get to it. So instead of hiring another person, we're sometimes using contracting. So we're doing a lot of those things, and I think when we present this to the finance committee, and then want to have an overall discussion, and it's in there for sure, then we can have some of those other discussions as far as moving inside.
Thank you, Steve, for all the work you did.
No problem. Any other questions? I just want to thank Roger and all the department heads, probably for putting it in, because they've already presented us a, a strong budget, uh, with what they need to be successful, and we want to try our best to support them every way we can, so. Once y'all get any notes later this week, and any other questions, feel free to reach out anytime, and if I can't answer it, I'll send you over to Roger.
Hey, Steve, hey, Steve, I want to thank you really, I mean, we're, guys, we're in a great position right now. I mean, because we've got a, you know, a former finance chair that's actually working with the mayor's office to do this. In the past, it's been Paul, and he's had to go through all this, and, you know, sometimes there's a, there's just overwhelming. So now you've got two financial minds that can go through this, so. I'm hoping that we get it, that you've pared it down enough that we don't have to go. I remember one year we went, I, I guess it was our first year, we went.
Go ahead.
Oh my gosh, that was painful.
And, um, so, so fortunately, we don't, we don't, we don't have to do that. Um, we can, and we will, if finance, I mean, chooses to, but, um, we're, we're very fortunate.
Doesn't look easy.
Well, I, 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 no, I guess my point is, this is, this is our fir, this, this will be our first budget that we did, right?
Right.
But we, but we have a great team outside of the finance committees, the whole.
A great team comes from the department heads and finance.
Correct.
Working the beats in the day.
I agree. And one thing I want to make sure that we talk about, um, that's on this list, but we've got to work with, with Michael. Oakland Springs Greenway is not designed yet. It's been three years, and we still haven't designed it. And then when we talked to him about building it, you could have seen him and Kent both look at us like we had three heads. It is not the best place for a greenway. And so we've got to talk with him about, is it the right money to spend there, even though we've talked about it for a long time? And I didn't hear a whole lot of positives coming out of it, as far as this is a good idea.
Well, many areas of that, my district. When I was sent out a, a request for input as to what to put on the CFP, they were more worried about their kids falling into ditches, than, and not one of them mentioned Greenway.
Right, and the roundabout.
Their, their number one request for that district is the roundabout at Brownsbury and Berkeley and Red.
So that perfect feedback gives us some understanding, and I want to be, you know, what's truthful as I can as far as.
I'm not saying they don't eventually want a greenway. I'm just saying right now, they want to get to work, they want their kids to get to school safely. They want to get to work without having a flat tire. And there are a lot of roads out there that need to be fixed. We're talking very basic needs here. As opposed to quality of life.
Right.
I would agree with that, because dealing with some of those subdivisions and talk about putting greenways and stuff behind their subdivision, people are not too excited about that. I think they like it once it's there, but any change kind of scares folks. Now, I'll just leave it at that, but I agree with what I would just say. All right, that's it, I'm the governor. If I can come back, I'll, okay.
Other cares, how much do we have left? Have we spent stuff in the month, in the neighborhood parks and that sort of thing?
Have we spent three, the three-fifty in neighborhood parks, and in the process of that, so we've got one-six, one-seven left.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm done on your neighbor microphone action talk.
Thanks, Steve. And I will leave the, uh, the tiger team update. That microphone won't stop me from talking to you. We start, Megan, you start this, as we're next up.
Okay, um, all right, we're going to divide this up a little bit. John, if you're okay, I'll get started, and then Jason jump in, and then let you jump in, and and then Megan will have, Megan go over the legal changes, uh, suggestions that we're going to make, changes to the ordinance. Um, sorry, the next item on the agenda is the tiger team update on public comments and, um, policy update. So we, uh, focused, uh, our efforts, we've broken this up into two, uh, big chunks, and the first chunk that we tried to tackle was revising our public comments, uh, policy, and also subdividing it by public comments and public hearings. So let me see if I've got this. Okay, so, um, the tiger team has met a few times and done separate research. We each had different assignments to look at and come in the recommendations. And so some of the things that we're going to be discussing tonight, uh, we're going to highlight for you to open discussion and get your feedback. And then in places where we have recommendations, we're going to share those with you, and some of the why behind, uh, how we came about, uh, with the recommendations. We recognized in our research that we needed to remove certain city code provisions uh, that had some detail about public comment rules, and we wanted to bring that out of the ordinance and put it into a policy with a resolution to have you approve, um, once we agree on the language, so that it would provide us with some flexibility, uh, to change with the times, as different times require us to, um, become flexible. And we wanted to provide separate guidelines for public hearings, because those are required by law, and under some circumstances will affect our owners' property rights and privileges, and we wanted to be very clear with respect to how you get to speak and how much time you would have, uh, to be able to speak with, um, public hearings. We wanted to promote efficiency in our council hearings. We also recognized there's some challenges to cybersecurity, so if someone's coming up to you at the last minute with a thumb drive wanting to share uh, their PowerPoint, you know, we have some work that we need to do to make sure anything that we load is safe. Uh, we want to protect privacy interests of some of the attendees. Sometimes we have minors in the audience, and so we want to make sure that they're aware of whatever rules we come up with, and what, and to be aware of when others are recording them, so that they, uh, participate knowingly. And then, of course, we wanted to ensure deprocess. So, um, the public comments portion of the agenda provides an opportunity for members of the public to provide input to the city council and to address general city business. When we met, we did not want to change where the public comments occur in our meetings. We did not want to limit people to speaking on agenda items. We want to keep it as open as it always has been. But we wanted to, uh, clarify some things, because, um, the way that it's worded in the ordinance right now, we have, um, people who can speak for three minutes unless they reserve their time in advance at a certain point. Uh, and that, that point has moved when, uh, during the state of emergency, but then they can reserve five minutes. And so what we were proposing is that we no longer have a deadline for signing up to speak. And as long as you're doing so prior to, um, the public comments ending at the meeting, we're going to allow everyone to speak for the, and we would hope, and our recommendation is to speak for the same amount of time. We are, um, discussing, uh, some, uh, options on how speakers can sign up. And so our focus is to try to make it easier, um, instead of having to call clerk at a certain time. What we propose is a new SMS system, so that anytime prior to the city council meeting, uh, someone can fill out a form on their phone. If they don't have a smartphone, they can do that manually, uh, with the clerk at the meeting, uh, to get access. And so the benefit of signing up early is that you get priority in terms of speaking. You're going to get to speak in the order that you sign up on the system. And so if we have somewhere else to go, then you can speak and then leave. Uh, and then the sign-ups are for, uh, provide the ability for us to get a heads-up on the question. So we're going to ask you for some information, not to share with the general public, but we might be able to direct you to a staff member that can address a question or a concern that you have, that you may not necessarily want to air, uh, in the public. So, is Jason here? Yeah, there you are. Okay, Jason, do you want to take my mic or a mic and talk about the SMS system?
Sure, and I just want to preface this with, we put this together within a few days. So it's something we thought we were going to do in a few weeks, dude. Eric, a lot on my team is just, uh, incredible at thinking through problems, and has come up with something that I like a demo for you guys tonight. Like I said, please understand that it's a little funky, it's a little slow, but, uh, you'll, you'll get the concept of what we're doing here. So, um, if anybody wants to try this while I'm talking through it, it'd be great, because you can, we're actually going to show it real time here in just a second. So if you would, uh, if anybody wants to try this, give me a second. So what we have on, on screen right now is a live demo of what we're going to do. So if anybody wants to send a text message to this following number, so if I was to try this, I'll, I'll go ahead and start one to two-five-six, two-two-eight, five-nine-seven-four. And just text the word COMMENT to that number. And when you do that, it's going to bring up a website, or it's going to give you a link, and you'll click on that link, and when that link comes up, it's going to ask for your name. It's going to ask for an address, or I'm sorry, it'll ask for your phone number. And all of this, um, is, is going to be. And all of this, um, is, is going to be made toward the name, the phone number, and the addresses required. But only the name is going to show up on the screen that we see in the room. And so once we do that, and we're going to hit enter here, I'm going to hit next. And it's going to put me in a queue. So now you see Michael's already in here and now Jason is in here. And it's going to keep an order of everybody that registers when they registered and it keeps that order. So let's say you're on your way, uh, and then on your phone, you'll also see a screen that says view the queue. So you can see actually where you stand in line. So, uh, there's two people ahead of me to get their request in. So we, uh, for the process of the demo, I set Garrett up hours ago to kind of prove that we can do this at any point. Um, as soon as, as soon as the next meeting is set up in the system, you can go ahead and start registering for your public comment. And then you can put a comment in there saying what you want to speak about, uh, so that when the meeting is over, we can export the list of everybody who spoke and hand that off to the city clerks so that everybody's name or address, the information that were sometimes missing, uh, between the podium and in here. So, uh, once this is done, and I'll have to run back in there to show how the queue works. But what will happen is, once we're ready for public comment, this is up, we'll hit, uh, it's your turn to speak. And then it'll come across the bottom of the screen and it'll say, Garrett, go out, please come to the podium. And he can come up and we'll have a timer. Where you see the welcome to Madison sign right now, we'll have a timer there and the timer will start counting down. So they'll know what the time is and then you'll know who's next up, next up, next up. You can monitor from your phone. Let's say you've signed up and you're coming to the meeting, but you're not here yet. We have a button here where you can say, I'm not here yet. And you click the button and it'll push you down further in the list. So you still have your opportunity to speak. We don't skip over anybody because you're not here once your time to come up. So, uh, this is, once again, very conceptual level. There's a lot we want to do with the graphics and the imagery and things like that. But we think that this is going to meet the needs of the city. And some of the, the, uh, complexity that we were dealing with, we think that we can solve as we go. But once again, this is something we put together in just a matter of days. We think we can make it look a lot better and we want feedback on, uh, what we like and what we don't like. And we can customize this, uh, customize this as we go. We're actually working with a company that has developed, they developed the software for restaurants. And we reached out to them, uh, late last week and said, okay, we understand what you're using this for. This is how we want to use it. And so this company said, well, we've never done that before, so let's try it. So we've been working with their developers pretty closely over the last few days to get the demo together. So, um, that is it from a very high level. I'd love any questions you guys have about it.
Do you get a drop in wind that they just pull up around? Would you like fries with that?
And so we're not all sharing the same pen in signing in. Uh, you're going to be able to do this from your phone. That's one of the advantages. And you're collecting information that might be illegible, but it's also not for public consumption. It's more for ours to direct your questions or to direct a, an email to a staff member who might be able to address something that you might not want to share, but we can, but if we know about it ahead of time.
And we've also, uh, we've come up with other ideas where we can possibly have, uh, keyword hearings instead of comments. So if the hearing is a different set of rules, depending on what, what final outcome of the, you know, the rules that are put in place, we can do some modifications on the software. It's highly customizable. So anything else that you'd like to see on it, we, we can definitely try to see if that works.
And you're going to see this in some of the draft documents that Megan's going to go over. But even though we're collecting more information, we're recommending that we no longer ask people to state their address and put that out there. Uh, we would like to know your district or if you live in Madison or outside of Madison. So we know how or who might could address your issue. But that's it in terms of identifiable information for the general public. And so one of the discussion points we're going to have later this evening is how much time we're coming in with a recommendation of giving everyone five minutes. Because initially, if you reserved your time, you would get five minutes. If you didn't reserve your time, you would get three. So, uh, but we'll open that up for discussion now. When it comes to, um, I think I need to flip my presentation now.
You've got to.
Okay, sorry.
Remind one is doing that. We also talked about, I think, um, so folks, not everybody might have a smartphone or might have access to the internet or whatever to do that. We also talked about then, and I guess very similar, like when I did in church, there's a car and then sit back at the chair in front of you. You know, we could have a, uh, somewhere on the way and sit back at the chair in front of you. But you could fill out a card or if you come here and, you know, you fill out a speaker or something at the time, uh, you don't have a device, but you can fill it out and to the clerk, um, as you're ready to speak. Uh, or, you know, and, and essentially put yourself in the queue. So you've got an option there for, you know, either without technology, you know, with technology, so it's one, then most contact. And two, you know, keep that, I guess, personal identifiable information out of the, uh, public phone.
Can you speak in your mind? We can hear you.
We're testing the level here. Okay, now for public hearings, uh, it's a little bit different because this is the portion of the agenda where the council holds legally required public input sessions prior to taking votes that affect the property or business interests of applicants and owners. And so we're, uh, recommending that, um, speakers, uh, reserve comments pertaining to public hearings for that portion of the agenda. Uh, we're going to provide an order and structure to that hearing so that it provides the ability for the applicant or, uh, the initiator or the staff member to speak first. And they're going to have a little bit more time to, uh, set everything up and give us baseline information. And then it provides the ability for the council to hear all comments for and against a measure at that time after an applicant's presentation. And then the neighbors who receive notice of the zoning action would go first before general, uh, commenters about a particular proposal. It provides the ability for the clerk to document all relevant commentary for against a measure within that section of the meeting minutes. And it provides a time limit of five minutes as well, um, for, with advanced signups. So, uh, we're, we're recommending five minutes for everything, uh, for general public comments or for this unless you are the person that's bringing forth, uh, the project. So, uh, our general recommendations, we're asking only for the name and the council district when the speaker comes to the podium. Um, we're asking for contact information, uh, through the signup. But we're not publishing it or requiring an announcement of addresses. Um, we're not going to be listing people's names on the agenda that's printed, of course, because a lot of this is happening, uh, with your phone as you enter, uh, in terms of who's going to be speaking. We require that any presentations must be submitted on a Friday prior to the council meeting so that we can do security checks on those presentations and announce whether third parties are recording meetings to provide notice to minors to protect their privacy. So if they come in and your intent is to record a meeting, um, we want, we need to know about that so that our council president can let audience members know in case maybe they do not want to participate then. If, uh, they don't know where that video recording is going or how long it's going to be out there. Um, we're going to publish, uh, the update policy and all relevant contact information on the city website. And here's a couple of things that, as we were doing research, uh, we noticed some cities doing. They made it easy to contact the entire council. They had an email, the entire city council button. Whenever we would bring up, uh, hearings or things, you could click one button and all of us would get an email message. Or you could leave a voicemail message for every city council member and it would forward to all of us. So we want to automate this and allow easier access to the council members before a hearing or a vote. Uh, we want to clarify that the council welcomes public input. And so these revisions are done to bring clarity, uh, but we're not going to engage in Q and A. So if you come up to the podium and you're asking a question, that's not the best place to get your question answered. We can probably answer your question via email or a meeting before or things like that. But we do want to hear from the public in terms of what concerns you have, um, or comments that you have on any given topic. And then, um, we want to give notice in our policies that we set forth that disruptive behavior, um, could cause someone to be removed from the meeting. We want to conduct a professional business meeting. We need to do that in a timely fashion. And so those are, um, going to be some of the recommendations and some of the language you're going to see. John, do you want to go?
We have to draw for you. All right, so, uh, I guess the next one is the city council minutes. Um, so, uh, you know, part of this is looking at what's required, um, and put the minutes. So the minutes, just like any other member, supposed to pay an action, you know, or record of, of what, uh, was done. Unnecessarily a, uh, providing corporate script of, you know, um, stenographer and this, that, or that, or that. Uh, speaking in, uh, in the microphone, so, um, fundamental procedure, which we all use as part of our roles, um, is to detect various concise, short, uh, synopsis of what was said and, and items that were done in a standpoint that helped y'all remember and help understand the context of, of items that. Uh, however, when you get into public hearings, obviously that's a little more in depth. Um, and certainly in areas, as you say, is, um, in a draft policy, uh, or a draft resolution. Um, there are a lot more, um, steps and details that are executed in part. Uh, on the skill to do, uh, also we still got more research and things. I found something out there today with Frederickburg, Virginia. I would encourage their logo on their website. They have a very clear, concise, awesome.
What was the name of the city?
Frederickburg, Virginia.
Can you send us the link?
Yeah.
I can.
That would be very nice. Thank you.
But, uh, it is, I mean, it was short as well. There was, I am, this is how you, you know, we were taking comments this time, year to year. Uh, it was, I had not only that, they also said how much time you get first finger. And, you know, the engineer mind, you know, is what you have to, to come out of this picture that doesn't ever end. And also said, and this is the maximum amount of time before I talk about. Uh, you know, if I don't want to get a break minutes piece and total pull it finish across everybody. So it kind of helps, um, all of us that have families have plenty of rest of our evening time. But, uh, we still got to, you know, go through all that. Uh, same thing with recordings, you know, of course, uh, what is left there to do and, and to look at, um, you know, options, uh, there for retaining videos, uh, and, and transcription of, of the recording, you know, and, uh, archive and those things for, for the city director's collection, uh, if you needed it at any date. Um, also looking at the calls, you know, mostly advantages, disadvantages for all those options. Uh, especially with the virtual meetings and what, for, you know, the benefit is, uh, I think we saw. Uh, they tell you up coming from Samantha, uh, from Zoom, you know, it was real high when it first started and it was like this one at the end, one or two people. Um, so you'll get, you'll get, you know, right, that's a, that's, that's an option, right? It really provide best access there, right, to all of you, so.
The last four meetings I know went on to.
Right. So at the same time, you know, there are certain other governmental agencies or governments that are actually testing it. So if you really want to listen, so. Um, and then last one is really just discussion points. You know, as, as Renee mentioned, uh, there are several areas in here, I think I talked about this earlier today, is, uh, you know, we got, we got a bigger starting point, um, on one kind of where we thought that in the, uh, the gospel. So, uh, certainly helping to, uh, debate and thoughts on time limits. Um, I will say the reason we kind of went with five is, uh, I think in the policy we saw it was five minutes for this, three minutes for that, five minutes for this. And it was like, okay, I guess a little complicated. But that's a big one, be consistent across board, right, and shred it one way or the other. Um, so, um, you know, I will say a lot of this that I see too, quite frankly, is, is the stuff that we do with planning permission that works like really good, but, you know, we're binding folks when you come in the room, you know, at the end of the meeting. Hey, public comments are for things that are not under public hearing. If it's under a public hearing, don't come up there with public comments. We'll take that very personally. But, but the folks that need to speak about something else come up. Deadlines, um, you know, getting on the agenda, submitting written comments, um, uh, presentation recording meetings and events is very big with Jason from the standpoint and us, right, cyber. At the end of the day, um, I'll write a note for Teddy and I, and where we work there, or, you know, that industry, you don't bring a thumb drive to your, in, into the book, you don't, if, if you just come to it, so. Um, from the standpoint, but now we'll, uh, scan those things, make sure there's nothing there to steal data, sell it later or whatever, or infect something. Making sure we get all that. Uh, recording meetings, what we want to do there, um, other one is written comments and one for public hearings and include it as attachments. Uh, I'll say, you know, I had a discussion on that earlier today, um, kind of go back and forth on it. But, um, in, uh, planning mission, when we get, you know, those comments emailed in, clearly when we come up, everybody's got that as part of the pack for, for that meeting. So I see those, somebody emailed them and printed out, we got it right there. They are not entered in as public comments or as part of, you know, part of the, uh, minutes. So you could see there, if you, if you included it and somebody came and spoke, um, and you didn't have a very, uh, detailed description of what they said and then somebody emailed and they got like a two-page novel, um, you're kind of showing paperless. Right, and well, the email, you get it again and you come and speak with the site. So, you know, it could be maybe just synopsis of it or, you know, just something included in you.
Do you discuss some of the planning commission if you all receive an email? Like there's a time where you all discuss it or it's just there for your?
Yes, sir, for our reference. If we need to discuss it, we will. Generally, um, I, I'll say, you know, I haven't had a time yet that there was a question that the individual had an email that wasn't brought up publicly. Uh, I mean, everybody's afraid about draining on their property, not in my backyard, traffic, you know, all that stuff. So literally everybody brings that up, so nothing about ten, about ten minutes. All the comments are already addressed anyway. But it at least helps to understand, you know, hey, I got ten emails on that, so okay. It's, you know, folks care about this, right? Did additional to the others or whatnot, so that helps. But when you put that in and on, you know, six, one, that doesn't, uh, the fact is more of a standpoint. My thought looking at it is making sure that we're fair across the board with, with what is fair between. So, um, and then anything else, I mean, I think as Renee put this, is, is we're trying to simplify hopefully in what we do, create a, maybe more consistent, easy, standard, way of doing it. Um, also help whoever, you know, council president and grandeur will have, and who, who's going to be next year, I don't know. But help whoever's there, right, with more of a standard script and standard things that, you know, how we kind of guide the, uh, moving along. You know, and helping communicate to, to the public, you know. And I can't tell you the amount of times we've gone up there and get all the questions right there in public comments. Like this is not our time to have a dialogue. This is your time to communicate with us. And there might be, might be, you know, questions that come up and it's like, hey, I don't have an answer right now, but we'll get back to it. So it's, it's, it's one of those where, you know, just kind of helping manage the expectations there. But I don't know who the famous waffle was, I said this, but that's my story.
Forrest Gump.
Are, is now the time to have discussions?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Whatever you want to talk about.
Um, my concern is if we go with five minutes, but we don't have a maximum amount of time, the main purpose of having the city council meeting is to conduct the business of the city. While part, hearing public comments is an important part of our job, if we give everybody five minutes and we have a line going out the door, which at times there has been a line going out the door, that means that at ten o'clock at night,
We'll still be here.
We'll still be here conducting the business of the, um, of the city. It will not, anything that's pertinent that happens during the conduction of that, that business will not be on the evening news so that people can hear about it there, you know.
John mentioned a limit of forty.
I think we do, we decide a limit time and then we can always, as a council, say, hey, we want to add another twenty minutes tonight or another. I think you can.
It can be voted in politics, too.
You have the standard forty minutes or wherever that time is. And then if the council president or if the council in general will say, oh, we want, we want to extend this tonight. You know, it doesn't have to often use it as something major going on, whether it's some of the school or three, three.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say after five years, I guess. Yeah, I'll, I'll say after five years, I guess, we've had maybe five, four, five, I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, where it's like, hey, gun, we're going to, the sun's going out, we're going to go there.
Right.
But it, it's been very few far between, but I'll also say. So in my opinion, I think the struggle for all, that power and that ability, that part of the council president. That individual wants to, you know, like we said, you know, extend, right? Or, or kind of say, guys, look, you need to come up here speaking about things that are relevant to, to items in the public, you know. Not necessarily coming up and saying, hey, I don't want to cover that. And then even value add some comments or something. So there are ways where you can kind of shut that down, but also whether you don't look. You got repetitive comments, you know, or you got a group of people who want to speak about something. Well, you just maybe, you know, get a stop push, right?
No, we have a limit of three, three at one time. Is that, is that just a, you know, limpa or standard city? I do that. Or is that, so that's not, it's not in the policy.
Yeah, that's.
It's actually in order.
Is it?
That's actually in the city code, the three-minute limit. So it says the three minutes for public comments. If you just decide you want to talk when you're at the council meeting, but if you sign up early, then you get five minutes. So that one's.
One of the things is more than three people. All I'm saying is, yeah, like, like say, someone would come up and talk about, I don't know, some ordinance we had on pets. You know, after three people had come up and kind of said the same thing. So how is it?
Very encouraging in the policy that people consolidate their comments if we know that, you know, there's a group that wants to speak to one particular person. And so we're, what we're trying to do is give notice that, you know, we do ask people to kind of get their game plan ahead of time and have someone who represents the groups to pull them so that they know that ahead of time. And we're going to provide some very clear, you know, policy guidance on the website. It's easy for people to see. So it's something that we, you know, hesitate to recommend to actually put in the policy as a rule for every time. Because there may be times where you want people to talk as much as possible, to have a full and fair voting. And that helps to protect your decisions down the road, really, so. But it is, you know, for an efficiency standpoint, nice if people can, you know, pick up representative.
Do you have any idea why there was a policy set with five minutes if you sign up beforehand and three minutes if you didn't?
No. Don't come in here and disagree with that.
And our, our whole plan, we're trying to set this for comments, I would just. When you sign up, you know, if you're the early bird, you're rewarded if you, you know, decide to come today, whatever, you're kind of punished. Honestly, that's not the right word, but, you know, I just like, if you have something to say, just decide it. You know, so maybe most for everybody's three minutes. Yeah, I think we talked about that. It's like, hey, just put three minutes for all.
Maybe four. Plus it's different. I don't mean, I don't, I like the consistent, really.
More amount of time.
Yeah.
You don't want to discourage people from coming because at the same time, if somebody looks and I'm with that post, Jason is in here, does post it. How many people are already signed up? I don't want that either. If you're looking of, when there's already nine people signed up, I might want to talk on my own.
Well, they see, I guess they would see, because they would see where they.
Yeah.
Well, what we would do is, so. There is a console that I have access to in there, but it's a web-based thing. So we could put an iPad or something in front of the council president so that they would be able to see who's in the queue. And you can actually change priorities, you can pause the time or whatever you want to do. So the council president with, with listening training would have some control over how, how that queue system does.
I, I would say for, for, for that one, the comment that solved that, I would hate before I signed up, like they come and all the members.
Well, we can also make, like I said, this is just a mock-up. We could make that window larger so you can see. But then when you text it, if you texted a while ago, you saw your so-and-so in the queue. So if you, if you text that number, you sign up and it says you're thirty-seventh in the queue, you might want to rethink your.
Well, I'd even say, that's not a problem. I mean, if you're thirty-seventh in the queue, you probably rolled in the bottom block and probably just went back to, you know, you don't say that.
But at least they would have a fair and accurate, you know, idea where they fall in order to speak.
So what do y'all think from a timing standpoint? Three, five, I mean, six, one, half thousand, other. Maybe if you can't get it across in three minutes, I, I would do, I, I think.
I think whatever timeframe we set is the timeframe that if someone has defined comments, if they want to say, hey, that's all of us. tornado warning.
Oh, my gosh. Sure, wait a sec.
Watch, okay. Somebody find out where that is.
Dave, Dave is on it.
Steve, save us. Also, we need to move. To me, I think if you put three minutes, it's quality over quantity as far as the timeframe. I'd like, I'd rather see fifteen people have the ability to speak than folks not speak. Or folks just say, well, I got five minutes and I'll just keep on rambling. You can stay what you need to in three minutes. And if you need to say more, we have the ability for them to get more information to us. They, you know, if they have questions or, you know, I, I think Mike's a perfect example. Many times, you know, he, he comes up and defines what he wants to say, knows how much time he has. He either signed up for five or he wants to come up and talk, and talk for three. He has a good job of, I know this is how much I have versus others who just will talk as long as they left. So I think, to me, you can get done, needs to be set at three minutes. I like more, as many people as want to talk. And I like the fact that we want to do it on the front end of the meeting and we don't change it versus the back end where it really kind of doesn't mean anything. Then all you want is just pass time to be able to talk. We want to hear what their thoughts are. So in public comments, they can get across what they need to give to this body in three minutes and have every will be to do that.
And very good on the opportunity if somebody is thinking about an issue and they're really giving us some information that we need to hear and the alarm goes off or the beeper goes off, you're able to say, continue on or go ahead and wrap up or whatever. It's not like in three minutes, the floor is going to drop and then I'm.
We're probably going, you know, be pretty, pretty strict on that, on that rule. Because if we're going to have an overall time limit, it's not fair for this person to be able to talk for four minutes and they keep wrapping up. And somebody at the end don't get there. So once we set this, this three minutes, this is going to be three minutes. If it's five minutes, we're running this, we're watching you set it.
My bit's some more, you know, you put a mic on.
If you do three minutes, do you mean the total time? I mean.
No.
I would just say at three minutes, you would be in the total time. At five minutes, I mean, two minutes doesn't seem like a lot, but it adds up fast.
Yeah, I want, many people just want to tell us what they think, you know. And then again, you're, you're giving them the ability if they can't make a meeting, but they want everybody to know, here's, here's, you know, a button that you can hit to get to all of them and they can write as long as they want to, get you every piece of information they have. Or ask you two questions and say, I really would appreciate these two questions being answered as you guys look to vote. I mean, you have to, but at least they're giving you what they want. You want to hear from them.
Yeah. I mean, I think three is good, but I don't like the time limit because it sounds like we're limiting. And I want, what you said, as many people to say, have their say on topic.
You're talking about a timeframe for the.
Yeah, don't have it, no, no, forty, or whatever. I was at the school board meeting the other day. It was like an hour and a half comments. But those people got to have their say. And I thought, yeah, it went long, but it's worth it because it was such a hard time. So, yeah, I'm not sure what was.
I, I agree with that, but I mean, like I said, if the same person comes up or if, if five people come up and tell you, hey, there's water in the ditch. 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 Right? That just took twenty-five minutes.
But I think Steve would typically, in that situation, do a, a good job of balancing, hey, guys, if anything new to say on top of that, then we really appreciate your, if not, then, you know, almost can stand up and all people agree with that thing. You can turn around, you know.
I guess that's, that's kind of the.
He's got some flexibility to do that, but again, our citizens, this is all set up to, to make sure that they have the ability to, so, to work with councils for giving them the information that they want based on the decisions that are going to be made, you know. They typically have a lot of time beforehand to be able to get that information too. If they want to come face-to-face with everybody, then they have the ability to do that. So the information that Renee, with timeframe, you guys are looking to, you got more information, more things that we got, we have to look at. But you got, as far as time, documenting, whether we keep it on, on the website for how much time, yada, yada, yada. So you have more work to do and you'll present again at, what, the next council meeting or another work session? Or what timeframe should folks look at for the next time we, we discuss this?
So we, well, one thing we want to do is at least get this language out of the ordinance because I don't think it needs to be in the ordinance for it to function.
Yeah.
So we redlined for everyone to move this out of ordinance and to get it into resolution. And I don't know if we could be ready for Monday for the first, is it a first reading or do we just do the resolution?
What do you think's the best?
For the ordinance repeal, that would have to be two readings before the resolution, just like, so.
So we introduce. Put the ordinance up for first reading to move out?
That's right, to have the first reading on that and continue the discussion about the resolution and then have the resolution on for approval on September thirteenth, if that sounds good to y'all.
And so whatever proposed resolution or policy changes, we'd want to bring them out. We would post that so that people could write to us and give us feedback. And so what we've got in the draft right now, I mean, we have five minutes for pretty much everything. I will say that in our discussions, we put a, a real priority on getting the five minutes for public hearings because that's what we legally have to do. And we want to justify whatever decision we're making and make it very clear in the record. You know, what, who was arguing for or against. And also in the minutes, we wanted the council members would say, this is why I'm voting for, against. We wanted to make sure that, that part of it was clear. And the other thing I would throw out there is that if, what I'm hearing is that the consensus is that for public comments, you might prefer three instead of five. We could all, because it's in policy, we could start with that. And if we needed to extend, we could later, but at least it gives us a starting point. If that's, but we need to have some feedback on what draft do we put out there in terms of the time limits.
I, my personal preference would be the five minutes with a maximum of forty-five minutes, something like that. Did you get referenced earlier?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I was just, I was, I was listening to Paul. I mean, I, I do it very good. Three minutes is, should be sufficient to get your point wrong. And then allows you to get through as many people as possible and get everybody out potentially to talk. And it's like, three minutes of dates, twenty people, uh, versus forty-five minutes. And that's some big difference. So. That's an extra, what, I want to all right back.
I don't back the public.
Well, it's all, man, it's almost an extra hour, you know, two more minutes per figure show. Whereas if you just did three minutes, like you get to a minute, you know. And I mean, quite frankly, I mean, for us, you know, in my time, twenty people, public comments, I don't remember.
Well, yeah, separating is probably the worst.
Yeah. Well, quite frankly, that one was really in the public hearing, right? Yeah. And so, and quite frankly, that's where we really, not to say we don't want to spend time in public comments. We want in public comments, that's like for call site, we want call, we require, we want to make sure to get that. But even in public hearings, that's probably where you want to spend the more time on because that's certainly where you're more comfortable with comments or areas where you're really, really careful in consideration and deliberation.
And something you're voting on that night.
Exactly.
Right, right. So we wanted to do that.
The other thing with three minutes too, I mean, if it's, if we're setting, setting a framework right, but we're not going to banner back and forth. You can, you just, you say whatever you want to for three minutes. I mean, that, that three minutes doesn't turn into five minutes as it has, you know, before. It's just a, you know, comment what you want to and then at the end of the meeting, if you want, you know, an answer, then we'll try and get that to you before the meeting. I know Miss Bebe does that a lot, she'll, she'll bring questions in.
Where you got questions?
Public hearing is why you're going to have ten people say the same thing. Now, uh, they all will say the same thing, like the cops. So all the people that came up here, all I'm going against, yes, yes, yes. That's why you're going to have trouble with five minutes.
Yeah, but that's required by law in the public hearing.
Yeah.
It is, but before there were no time limits. I mean, sometimes it could just go on and on.
Well, and they get out and say the same.
So we're, we're doing some consistency for everyone.
Someone, someone is, you know, actually, someone, you know, but I think.
It's like foreign language.
Yeah, but I, I think, I think you're getting there from this, but that's where the council president comes in. Well, that guy manages that, that place and stuff, probably. And I got side, you know, look, we appreciate your comment. This is what we're here to do. And listen, I, you got ten people there, you don't want to say sign, you know, let's just talk for. And, you know, let, let's get to the, all the detail.
You guys, think back to, we had one citizen who came up and said about fifteen seconds worth and said, for my, the rest of my time, I don't want to sit here in the finals. Remember how long that was?
Yes.
I mean, there's a lot of, three minutes is a lot of time to be able to get to, across to this council. And, and what, what you believe. And, and, and I think it's, it's a good number and if we need to adjust it later, um, but I want as many, I don't want people to feel like, oh, gosh, if I can't get here in the first, you know, fifteen people that I'm not, they're going to cut me off from forty-five minutes. You're defeating the purpose of public comments.
Yeah, I don't like that.
I don't, and I would refer to the three minutes with no maximum.
Let's see how it works. And if we need to adjust it, we can. If it doesn't give them enough time.
So three minutes and then five minutes.
Three minutes for public comments, five minutes for public hearing. That's the draft that goes out and then we'll get feedback. So that's what we're posting. And the only, the other real big thing is about written, uh, comments because if you're late, then email the entire council. If, if they either cannot attend or ask for an accommodation or for whatever reason, they just want to submit written comments. The big question that we have in our draft is, do the written comments get made part of the minutes? Are they attached as a part of the minutes or not?
I would think that a summary of the written comments would be in the minutes. The same amount as like a written, I mean, a verbal comment. If somebody came and spoke, then, and they are, in the minutes, their, their comments are summarized. That, that email would then be summarized also. So there, there's.
You're not giving more time.
To a three-minute read.
For the person who doesn't show up as one who does, in terms of what the record states.
Correct.
Basically, if you can't read in three minutes, then that, that gets summarized because if not.
You're not going to read in a council meeting. You're simply saying.
No, no, no. I'm just saying that as a, as a, as an overall gauge, you know, if it takes me twenty minutes to read an email, well, I'm giving that person twenty minutes as opposed to the person that comes here, makes herself present, three minutes.
What you're saying is if you're typing email, keep them by, I mean, you keep this about forty minutes. Three minutes of written page, right? Like if you were going to speak that, it should take almost forty minutes.
That's going to be a hard.
I, I think, I, I thought what Connie meant was, just arbitrarily say that, um, Bebe can't make it to the meeting, but she uses the button and, and writes, she can write insolutely, it doesn't really matter. But when it comes to the minutes, the, the agenda that you're asking, or the meeting minutes, Bebe actually, we sent a letter to, I've sent an email to council that was, was against so-and-so. And so, so the same thing that you would have is the person came up and spoke.
Exactly.
And, yeah, so that's what you're saying.
Yes, that's what I was saying.
And how long you know, written, written as long as they want to, they can probably get more information that way.
Okay, so the way that the sentence is written right now on the proposed policy is, written correspondence for public comments will not be part of the city's minutes, but written correspondence that is germane to the subject of public hearings will be made part of the minutes. And the assumption is we were going to put the, the whole written comments from, for public hearings in. But instead, you're saying we'll just make it a summary and summarize.
Just as if they were hearing persons speaking.
I think you go by, we're not, we're not submitting any written comments as part of the official record.
Okay.
But we'll summarize just as if you were, it's a part of us.
In public hearings and comments or just public hearings?
Because we even do that, I mean, we even, and, and come back to my, we even do that in planning commission. There is the, the emails, the public meetings, that is not submitted as part of the official, um, minutes. But, you know, you can just put that in there. This is some, uh, so-and-so said, this is how policy, so-and-so is against this. So-and-so came up, spoke, whatever, or whatever the, the summary is.
Because otherwise, somebody could send ten pages.
Right.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, that's right.
So if I, if I wanted to give a long dissertation, I'm going to send to an email versus showing up in person and talking for three minutes.
Okay, can you rough with that and maybe re-drive that?
Keep that separate.
So basically, get some, so both, both comments get summarized about the city clerk, so the city clerk will take an email and summarize it just to say what is most, that you're not doing.
And Greg brings up a very good point too, I think, uh, whether, you know, all the language or whatever, um, you know, if you want to submit that as part of the record.
You could say that the same rules apply to emails as,
Absolutely.
As public, um, in-person comments, and, and with regard to publicity, et cetera.
Right, so the issue, we have to be clear and state that it, it's not going to be verbatim or quote, or, just like the minutes are not a transcript, they're not transcribing what people say.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm a question.
Okay, yes.
That way, everybody gets the same opportunity, try to cross the border.
Okay.
And, you know, it's part of the hearing, and we can summarize that out.
All right, so then for Monday night,
Right, absolutely.
Okay, so for Monday night, we're going to put in the first reading of the ordinance where the language comes out, we're going to post, once we're cleared up, we know what you're going to edit in our proposed language of the policy for comments.
If you guys are ready, we can just make this a part of the public, if you'd like, would you like to do that?
I have a question about how your community knows that how, uh, issues, it's, it's mentioned on the side, but how to type it out?
What is it, what's the question, I can hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, okay, it talks about making accommodations with the ADA to keep them compliant with that. What are we doing for those that can't come and just give public comments? What are we doing so they can still report public comments? Is it just the email, is that how we handle it?
It's the same opportunity, everybody just gets an email and you can talk about it.
Okay, and now that we've got a spike going on again, and there's the worry of COVID and stuff, anybody who doesn't want to come because of COVID, now will have the option, and that would be their option to do emails. And it's still,
Well, I guess like emails, like the college, they arrive as,
They have that voicemail, they used to mention, where they could call the phone number and voice mail to all of us. Is that what you have, I don't know, I didn't have a,
This, this, this is about public comment and, and, and public hearing comment.
You know, usually when it comes to ADA accommodations, it's very much dependent upon what the request is, and it's an individualized inquiry, so when that comes in, we send it to our ADA coordinator who's,
Yes.
So it, those, what, anytime somebody wants an accommodation, it kind of depends on what the accommodation is that they're asking for because you're only required to give a reasonable accommodation, and it may be what they're asking for is beyond. So what we're going to do in part depends upon what, what it is that is causing them not to come here and what they're asking for. So I don't know that we could ever address in policy for every single situation.
But it is going to be generally known that we do need these accommodations, and this is the way you go?
Yeah, because it's in the policy, it's, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just clarifying, you know, because, now that we don't have, so, since we are back to Zoom, if you're not here, you can Zoom.
Yeah.
No.
We're not Zooming right now.
But I thought AI, we had, I thought it was probably an emergency, was that?
We're going to have to go back and revote, and that is a council, we can bring that back up.
She did something today, was that today?
It's an option, but it's not mandatory.
Oh, so she, it's just an option, so that enjoys, if that's not something you need, is that?
I'm, I don't know, I'm asking.
Except right now, we would have to go back and vote on, in that, at that council meeting, if we wanted to bring that forward, but right now, nobody's brought that up, so we haven't. We can talk about it Monday night, but we would have to vote on, bring that back into, and for how many days, and who can use it, who can.
Okay, I feel like AI has made it an option again, it's back.
So, the policy that we were, the target team was focused on was, um, in terms of how, how we're going to operate in council meetings according to the Open Meetings Act. Um, we weren't trying to create a policy for when we're in an emergency or not, an estimated emergency or back and forth, and so that's a separate issue, but we're trying to create something that would be lasting in terms of what life is like under the Open Meetings Act as it exists. And putting everything in policy so that we can quickly shift if the state legislature changes it or amends it and get, or trying to get it out of the ordinance.
Okay, I understand the difference, but since it is AI, you guys know it's an option, I'm not going to dispute. So it sounds like we have to discuss this. Fine, that's good.
Yes.
I, I, I appreciate you opening up, I know it's a work session, but it, it kind of sounds like you're, to some extent, um, having some guidance to, to move towards Monday and things like that. I, I, I was going to hold comments, but I'll at least comment on, on this one particular one, um, and I'll have some others that I'll share later, uh, with you, Renee and John, regarding the policy draft, I, I think it's informative to, to how you go about this, but I'll share that later. In terms of what you're talking about, the Open Meeting Act and the emergency, uh, and Megan might be able to clarify this, but I've, I've gone through that again, and my, my understanding of that, for, for what it's worth, is that you're already authorized by, by state statute to conduct electronic meetings, you just can't have a quorum electronically. You, you have to have a quorum present, and, um, but that there's no restriction against having public meetings conducted electronically. So I, I don't think that's a limitation, from my interpretation of the Emergency Act, I think that's something that's available to you at any given time, again, I would defer to Megan to, to provide you clarity on that, but that's, that's my interpretation of it all. I got, I've got more feedback on the other things, but I'll share this with you via email to,
Need a discussion on the, on, on the update of the, of the public comment policy.
I'm sure there's time, looking at it and doing it.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of progress. Uh, last thing we have on the agenda is the travel budget for council, although the finance committee has a thing that we talked about now, we need to ask the finance committee to formally put together a procedure of, of what that looks like, and then y'all bring back for the vote on it.
We don't, we don't have a policy here, and I think that's what we're talking about in the group, I don't know if we want to do it here now or if we want to have it, let's have that discussion in finance committee.
I think the finance committee, in, in a perfect world for me, I think the finance committee can put together a policy of what that looks like with right now, there's no, there's no policy in place of how, of how council travels at all, so, as long as there's money in the budget, you can go to any country you want to go to without any, any governance, not something that's a healthy, that's a healthy way to be, so I, I would like for, for there to be some type of policy in place of what that looks like moving forward.
And I, I think, yeah, we can do that, I mean, the finance committee can do that, I think it's, it should be in mind with the way the department heads run their departments, you know, if we, if we expect other department heads, and mayor to buy, buy something, we should do the same thing. We need to set out, you know, a, a separate dollar amount in a budget and do that.
I think, I, I, I think we need the budget specific travel, then we know we're going to go, then that's in the budget, I think that before councilors go, I think that should go and either be approved by, before they leave to go, or plan to move, or something, I, I don't know.
Well, no, I, I mean, it should, it should through, I know we've talked about it, it should come through finance committees and council president because, you know, at least with council, with the finance committee, there's three people there that are in this free, as opposed to one having,
Yeah.
Having a decision if they can go, if they can't go, and where they can go. You know, I'd say that we have to come up with a policy to do that, but I think it's the right time to do it.
That's something that finance committee can look at, and we may talk to Roger and see what that looks like, you know, come something in the next couple, couple of weeks.
I'm, I'm pretty impressed, but I would like to put something in place of what that looks like. So I would like to, I would get four years out, that way when we get to next year's budget, you know, maybe we can look at that and, and on council budgets, know what we need.
You guys have a special projects line item, what I would suggest is that you determine, you know, kind of amongst yourselves, what is it that we think we may want to do next year, you know, is anybody going to go through any leadership classes? Is anybody going to go to any seminar for conferences, and then, just get a high level idea, and then just take, instead of having all of the special projects, put it into a training and seminar project, so, that way, like you guys were talking about, if we've got the money there, you know, or give, or give each one of you guys X amount of money, you know, to, that you can spend on, you know, kind of your own, whatever you feel like you want to, so, but I think if you just put it in a, a lot, the council, excuse me, the department heads each have their own training budget, that they go back, tie together with conferences that they need to go to, and almost every one of the department heads over the course of the last three or four years has brought training down to make sure it's a priority and not a, a want, but it's a need, you know, obviously, police and fire, I mean, enormous amounts of training that they are required to do, you know, we've got certifications that each one, whether it's recreation or, or engineering, that they all have certifications they have to do, we've kind of quit having the seven people go to Pervito Beach for the so-and-so conference just because they could, it just, we just don't see that happening like we used to a long time ago. So, I think if you guys can just come up with a general idea, and then just take it out of your special projects and put it in a training budget, it would be fine.
I mean, I'm doing that, what else?
And, and if you put it on a special project for each different district, you know, then they know that they're accountable for that amount, you know? For example, like, I've used it for McDab when they gave me that money, so if each different district had, say, the voice,
It's definitely different from what we're talking about, your money for McDab is not the money to use, McDab has their own.
I'm, I'm saying that that was,
Not on a special project, we'll have a, we'll have a council training budget
Right.
that we'll all pull out of it, or we'll try to put some type of budget together, whatever that person like for, for each individual person, and make a little flood for somebody, things come up, like, somebody needs to go to Montgomery, that's in there, yeah. You can plan for every single dollar, but then if that person comes, finance committee says, hey, I'm doing this, yep, there you go.
And I think one of the things too, that, you know, a perfect example is when they, it's, I'd really like to go on a DC trip with, with, with the Hudson County Chamber, that's, you know, one or two of you guys going on that trip, on the Montgomery trip is the big benefit to the city, with the connections you make, people you, you'll meet, and just expanding the city's breadth of, of involvement. Same thing with leadership, there's five different leadership type classes, there's the flagship class, there's focus, there's management academy. Megan, which one do you go to?
Connect.
Connect, you know, and, and, you know, so each one of those has its own uniqueness, um, so, you guys kind of figuring out how we, hey, I'll go to this one, you go to this one, we'll take this one, I think it doesn't benefit, but maybe, you know, collaboration of everybody kind of having a good idea of it on the front end, then put it in a budget and then manage the budget.
I mean, I, I think it's fair this time, I mean, we should have an idea of what we're going to go to next year, maybe for the leadership or, or whatever training, and come, come up with that, I guess do that to you, and, and then we'll have a discussion, have a discussion with finance committee. Greg will be there, and he looks like, and somebody to maybe take his mic. But, I'm sorry, sorry, I'm helping, um, so, I mean, that's, I think we get that, and then we get that to Greg, and that's put in this year's budget, and that was a travel one, or as I, I'm sorry, a training one.
You get to it early enough, or just add it to the mayor's budget, if you don't, then when it comes to finance committee, then you guys can just make the adjustment in that, so it's just a matter of if you have moving money or if you need to add a little bit more, you can.
At one point, you had said something about, um, having somebody get together all of the ALM findings and the information about how much those conferences cost, did that happen?
Um, you say, look at all that, not, I mean, um, we didn't, for the city, we do, not for council, we haven't done that yet. But we can find that out, Lisa can help us with, I mean, those, and, and Kim can help, we can get those, those pieces of information for you. So what you guys say, we'd like to go to the ALM conference, and this year it's going to be, you know, it was here last time, you know, next time,
Then this time, I think it's in Tuscaloosa.
Yeah, so Tuscaloosa, so how many of you guys?
I don't know how you get there, but,
Now, the visiting classes, a lot of those classes are online, I mean, those, those are banned places.
I guess, what I like to say is, we set a budget place on where we think we're going to go, and as that time gets closer, and you get ready to go, we go look at what's the cost then, because if the cost, you know, we said, we're going to be five hundred bucks together, and all of a sudden now it's going to be a thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then, maybe that's a trip we don't need to go on, you know, or something, we could look at, okay, we're going to have, what we're not going to have.
Well, and I just want to make sure, training is such a critical aspect, and, and in the connections, it's, you know, what you learn is one thing, the connections and the people you meet are another, and especially for a lot of our department heads, Lisa will tell you, when she goes to the city clerk's conference, it's invaluable to be able to talk with other folks, to, to talk through the problems that you're having. Same thing with council, being able to talk through a lot of that, so, you know, we've got to find the right ones, and if we can help to see what's out there and the breadth of what we might be able to, to do, we'll try to give you guys some insight as far as what we think is available next year, and then kind of a high level of what it costs, so you can kind of start planning. A perfect example is leadership, I can get an idea, you plug somebody in the leadership between thirty-five hundred dollars here, two thousand dollars here, or five thousand dollars here, and we can figure that out, and we'll get that, we'll target that.
Anything else? I think that one is going to be pretty next year, the next five or so.
Yeah.
Or down.